Okie dokie, at 7:15, so we're gonna call to order the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 23rd. And at this time, I'm going to ask our county administrator, for one last time, will he please lead us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. If you're able, let's rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright. So, our first item of business tonight is very special, and it's a video presentation to honor our retiring county administrator, Mr. Craig Meadows. And we didn't bring the roast one, we brought the good one.
Oh, my goodness.
My next item is county attorney's report.
No report, ma'am.
Thank you. And, Mr. Meadows, your very first county administrator's report. You've been here about a week on the job, and, I mean, you're still smiling and all that sort of stuff. So, your report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to point out the one that's been smiling the most, though, the last week's been Carol.
I sort of noticed it over there. I didn't know if I should really bring that up or not. Yes, you are.
Well, I do have just a few things for the board's interest this evening. First off, I do thank you again for the opportunity to be here. It's been a good first week. Certainly want to thank all the staff for all the support they've given me so far, and especially Carol. Carol's been a wealth of information, and has been very, very helpful in getting me acclimated to Montgomery County. And other than that, I really have nothing else to say at this evening.
Very good, thank you.
Craig, I remember, I think, the first time that I ever saw or met you, we were having a leadership meeting, and it was in the old county admin conference room. And I just knew from the very beginning, when you first shared a little bit about yourself with us, that you had a great amount of integrity, and that you're a really nice guy. And you have not proved me wrong, that's still the case. I'm gonna miss you a whole lot, and I appreciate everything you've done for us all. And you know I will be calling you. Thanks.
Craig, you've been a blessing to our county. Montgomery County is so much better just because of you, your leadership, your personal touch. I wish you the very best in your retirement. I hope you and your family enjoy every second of it. Take care, and we hope that we'll see you around.
Hey Craig, I thought I would bring up this story that I don't know if you remember or not. I think Jim Polittis reminded you of it. The very first time we met, I spoke at a board meeting, and you cut me off by about two minutes. And after the meeting, I think Jim introduced us, and he told you that you had done that, and you didn't even realize it. But since then, we've become very good friends. I have always been amazed at your selection of your staff. You've done such an excellent job. You've been a good mentor, and I certainly do appreciate everything you've done. And I hope you'll stick around, because we may be needing help in the years to come, maybe filling in on a commission, or an authority, or something like that. It'll be easy, you'll love it. See ya. Have a great retirement.
Craig, just wanted to tell you, I appreciate everything that you've done for the citizens of Montgomery County, and for me. And you're really gonna be missed, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Mr. Meadows, what a great time it's been working with you. I've worked with a lot of supervisors, and worked with a lot of supervisors and leaders over the years in different roles. I have to say, your honesty and integrity is, beats them hand down. You got my attention the day after the first election, when I got elected to the board. You were the first one to call me, and congratulate me, and lead me through the process. And I greatly appreciated that. You've helped me along the way in so many ways. Anytime I needed anything, anytime I've come across a problem that needed to be addressed, you've always been there, and not made me feel like I was going further than I should with you. And I appreciate that. You're a great leader, and I know you're gonna move on to do wonderful things in the future. Thank you for being you, and letting me be a part of this family.
Craig, it's been such a pleasure to work with you. I am so excited to congratulate you on your retirement. I feel like in our time together, I've learned so very much about the art of diplomacy, and how to answer a question without not really answering the question in the most politically friendly way possible. But truly, it's been a pleasure. I look forward to becoming your friend, and not just your coworker, in the years to come. I really look forward to enjoying more pictures of you, and Rhonda, and your children, and all of your beautiful grandchildren. And I'm just so excited about what the future holds for you and your family, now that you will no longer be working for Montgomery County, but hopefully still working with us in some capacity. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for your leadership. And thank you so much for your mentorship for me over the past eight years. You will be very, very missed. We're very fortunate for the decisions that you made, that leaves us in really great hands. But know that your impact is profound, and we will all miss you so much.
Well Craig, what can I say? I've had the privilege of serving on this board for your entire 14-plus year tenure. And I just want to state upfront that one of the most important decisions any board of supervisors can make is hiring a county administrator. And being the only current member who was on the board when we hired you, I think I can state, we definitely made an excellent choice. We knew when we hired you, Craig, you were exactly what our county needed. And I want to thank you, Craig, for all you have done for Montgomery County. You've made us a county that is looking forward to the future. You started out with a population of a little over 94,000 citizens, and now we're at a population of over 100,000. Your leadership efforts at the local, regional, and state level are well-known. Your service and leadership in outside organizations has brought recognition and increased knowledge to our county. And I especially want to thank you for your involvement with the Virginia Association of Counties. You just didn't attend meetings. You became a member of the Finance Committee and the Budget Committee. Thank you, Craig, for the guidance in preparing us as we move on, for your leadership through hard times, such as the collapse of the Blacksburg High School roof, and the pandemic, and for your accessibility and care that you have given to the staff, our citizens, and to us as individual board members. You have definitely left Montgomery County in better shape than when you arrived. You will be greatly missed, but I know you're going to appreciate having a much more flexible schedule. Best wishes for your next chapter, and remember these two things. You can always come back for public address, and we need volunteers at the Animal Care and Adoption Center. Thank you and good luck.
Congratulations, Craig, on your retirement. Thank you for being an exceptional leader, mentor, friend, and a true champion for Montgomery County and the New River Valley. We are so appreciative and fortunate to have such a wonderful leader, who has served with outstanding professionalism, dedication, and integrity. Thank you for your diligent daily work to ensure our citizens live a prosperous, healthy, and high-quality life. Thank you for your boundless support and value you give our employees, where you often remind us that in Montgomery County, our people are our greatest asset. Congratulations on all the contributions and accomplishments over the last 14 years that you've given to ensure that Montgomery County is truly the best place to live and work. With gratitude, I wish you and Rhonda the very best in the next wonderful chapter of your life. Congratulations.
Wow.
Would you like to say something?
I don't know if I can. I was doing pretty good till you had those pictures of Rhonda in there, too. And it was like, oh my goodness. What a, what a 14 years. It's gone by. Some days, it seems like it's been longer. Most days, it seems a lot less than that. I don't want to overuse the word blessed, but you don't know how blessed I've been to be here with you guys. You know, I have worked in several communities, was in Bedford seven years, was in Monroe a total of 10. Just with great folks, good staffs. But I couldn't have foreseen, when I accepted this job in 2009, all the blessings that you guys would provide to me and my family. And one of my sayings, you know, I've told folks, I guess it means I'm getting old, because I'm just full of sayings now. But one of my sayings is, is to always try to leave things better than you found it. I think my mom and dad taught me that from an early age. And I hope that that's what I've done here. I'm confident with Angie taking this role, and with the staff that we've assembled here. I do think it's better than I found it. And I just, I just wish you guys all the best. I won't be a stranger. I don't know if I'll come to public address anytime soon. I may go to the animal shelter, and I am staying on a border commission to try to stay plugged in. But I just can't thank you enough. Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for your service, and thank you for honoring me tonight. That was, that was too kind.
And for those of you in the audience and listening at home, we're gonna make sure that Sheriff Levens gets to see the video. She is out of town with family business at this time, so that's why she's not here tonight. Okay, so that leads us to our next item, which is the Montgomery County's annual report. It seems like we just did this, and I know we didn't, but it seems like we did.
I think we did just do this. And it's not fair, I have to get up at this point, but I know I don't have a choice. So here we go. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Harris, for those of you who don't know, with the Public Information Office. And on behalf of the Public Information Office and county staff, I'm excited to share with you the annual report for fiscal year 2023. And that covers July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. And before I share the brief annual report introductory video, I wanted to go over a few of the highlights of the report. Once again, this is to go over a few of the highlights of the report. Once again, this is an interactive digital report. There are pictures and videos included throughout, and the content from the various departments throughout the county, they're put into six main categories, and that includes general administration, public safety, parks, recreation and culture, community development, health and welfare, and public works. And again, this year, we have included a, let me get there for you. We've included an awards and recognitions page as well as a facts and figures page, so that folks can quickly at a glance see some of the key highlights in the report. As always, this report is only made possible thanks to the hard work and significant contributions of Dr. Lee Aguilar, Becky Hurtling, and Josh Rosenfeld in the Public Information Office, obviously, as well as the many accomplishments that the various departments have done throughout the year, all the county staff involved in that. So without further ado, I'm going to play you a brief video.
Hi, I'm Craig Meadows, county administrator for Montgomery County for the past 14 years. As I look back over my tenure here, I am so thankful for the many things that we've accomplished and the wonderful people, the men and women that show up every day here at the county to make our community a great place to live and to work. Fiscal year 2023 marked another remarkable year with the county receiving numerous national, regional, and local recognition for the many services we offer and the projects that we have completed. As I look forward to retirement, I'm thankful to have finished out my career in this beautiful county that I call home, Montgomery County, Virginia.
Okay. I hope that brief introduction has enticed you to visit our website and to view the annual report in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone that helped with this. It's an important part of what we do, and it gives a lot of really good information to citizens. So, thank you again. All right, so that takes us to our next item, and we have Kevin Byrd here, and he's accepted director at the New River Valley Regional Commission, and he has a presentation for us.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be on your agenda tonight. Just going to provide an update for you on two main projects. One is the COVID-19 pandemic after action report, and the other is a brief update on passenger rail service to the New River Valley. And reminded seeing Craig's video here and this being his last opportunity, that he is, his leadership has really helped the region significantly in these two projects and many others. But, yeah, he's the inaugural chair for the New River Valley Passenger Rail Station Authority, and then, of course, Montgomery County played a significant role in our pandemic response, being the fiscal agent for that and lots of regional coordination. So, for those that may not be familiar with our organization, we provide service in four counties: Montgomery, Floyd, Plasky Giles, the city of Radford, the towns therein, and higher education institutions are members as well. That's 13 local governments with four counties, a city, eight towns, and three institutions. Really, our efforts are focused on collaborative impact, and we also provide technical assistance to our members when requested. And our focus is on helping develop the relationships. As we saw in the pandemic, the relationships were in place, and we were able to respond very effectively across the region because of those relationships. And after mine, folks, that regional wins, they take a long time, but there are often a lot of winners along the way. So the governance for our agency, there's 26 board members. 51% or more are elected officials by state code. Montgomery County is well-represented on the board. Mr. Fidzikowski serves as vice chair, and then recently, this board appointed Mr. Brian Wheeler as a citizen appointee, since there's more than 3,500 population in the county. The universities, since they don't have elected leadership, they are often filled by their vice president roles within the institutions. Generally, we have 17 folks on our team, and we're adding more as we speak. We have a lot of growth in programs, and that's really exciting because we continue to have regional programs come our direction. These are the main areas that we're focused in, is housing, transportation, economic development, broadband deployment, and land use planning, GIS mapping, community health, and finance. So I want to focus a little bit more on the public health after-action report. Now, this is something that can be found on our website, nrvrc.org, and we have a library button at the top that'll take you to this report. There's several significant findings that want to make sure all of our communities are aware of. This was obviously a joint leadership effort and the success in delivering a lot of services, but some key things that were the one and only regions that did some of this. This is the only region to pool the CARES Act money in response to the pandemic, not just in Virginia, but from what we can tell across the entire country. It speaks to the trust that exists among the local governments. It's the first to have drive-through testing. It's the first to have a COVID-19 call center, first to have the vaccine call center. And you all know, we figured out how to overload phone lines by having those two things in place. We were the first to move through vaccine groups. We were often told we had to wait for vaccine to arrive and let other regions catch up to where we were moving through those vaccine classes. It was remarkable. A lot of joint communications and seeing Jen Harris up here, she led a lot of those conversations with all the local government public information officers in Virginia Tech. It was a daily communication between them. And of course, Craig Meadows and his colleagues, the other chief administrative officials around the region, we were coordinating them regularly, helping them make decisions on policies of whether to open or close facilities and that sort of thing. And then, lastly, it was a significant investment that the communities used with their CARES Act dollars, was a crisis de-escalation center at the New River Valley Community Services. You know these two faces, Chief Anthony Wilson and Dr. Noel Bissell. They were the unified command, and then here you can see in this organization chart, just all of the facets that were collectively working in response to the pandemic. It's remarkable. The pooled funding I referenced earlier, being the only region in the state and the country that did that, you can see on the upper right side here is per capita allocation of resources from CARES Act dollars, a $2.85 million investment. And then on the left, you can see where those investments were geared towards testing, of course, vaccinations, and masks that equated to that $2.8 million investment in response on behalf of the region. This takes you back right here, drive-through testing. You know, now we can order them free online, and they're coming to the mailboxes now. But at the time, very limited test supplies, but we figured out how to do it as a region, and they had a very controlled environment and kept the population safe in doing so. The partnership with the Fralen Biomedical Research Institute of Virginia Tech, Carillion, was significant. And I just want to read this quote. It said, "The Virginia Tech Carillion 19," or sorry, "The Virginia Tech COVID-19 lab was a game changer for the district. While other people were still waiting for 10 days to get test results from LabCorp or the CDC, we were getting results back the next day or the following day. It made a big difference when we were doing case investigations and contact tracing in the beginning." Some Dr. Bissell, New River Health District Director. It was remarkable that they stood up that testing equipment and supplies, and said, "We're going to do this," and it really put us ahead in a safe place. We worked with the chambers of commerce early because we had a lot of the small and medium-sized businesses, and even large at that point, that didn't know how to operate safely in the COVID environment. And so, let's see what we can do about pulling together some policies for that Working Smart, Working Safe guidebook. And we had an online town hall, and really, that led to creation of that document, and then in the investment and creation of what was later known as the Business Continuity Team. And this is, was a direct connection to the Health District. They weren't really able to add staff and capacity. Our organization was able to flex in response. So we hired three folks on our team, one of which Holly Lesko is still working with us and is the director of community health. So the Business Continuity Team had significant impact. I love sharing these numbers. Over 480 unique businesses that were engaged in terms of asking how to operate safely and access to testing. The list goes on and on about what services they were able to access. That's 57,000 jobs, the results, and then 27 schools. Another great quote here is that, "I think that the partnership with the Regional Commission, the Health District, and the Business Continuity Team was incredible for the community. I think it saved lives." Here's a picture of that COVID-19, the vaccination call center, that was stood up within two business days, and was operational for six days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. from February until May of 19. And that was, or sorry, get the dates wrong, but that many months, remember that much. It was a busy time. And then, of course, some of the marketing content that I'd seen around the region. So the timeline, this is something that I had the opportunity to present the board with framed graphic earlier. This is a timeline. Everything in orange on here represents activities of the task force, and then across the bottom in that grayish-blue color, those are cases in Virginia, and then the yellow line represents vaccinations in the region, and then the orange line are cases. So this timeline starts all the way back when PPE was being ordered for the region before the first case even hit Virginia. This task force was already ordering supplies. And as you move through that, you can see it all the way to the end where there were over 200,000 COVID-19 cases tested through the New River Health District. So it was impressive to look back at all the collective activity. And just wanted you all to be aware, and it's really extend a thank you for the role that Montgomery County played, elected officials, and your willingness to collaborate across the region. As you get a chance to look at this report and look at this timeline with perhaps a little bit larger font size, you'll be able to tell that there is just a lot of significant things that took place during that timeframe. So, and that has set us up well for opioid abatement investment that Holly Lesko is going to talk about a little bit later. So other item I touched on briefly is the New River Valley Passenger Rail update. It's that we've been working on this since 2013, celebrating 10 years of effort, and we're making progress. Earlier on, we had done a station location study and a ridership study to figure out there was adequate demand. And then following that, we worked on a study to figure out how to own and operate a station jointly. That led to the recommendation to pursue legislation in the General Assembly to create the New River Valley Passenger Rail Station Authority. That was established in September of 2022. They've had seven meetings to date. There's nine members of that station authority, seven local governments, and two universities. They've been busy over the seven meetings. They've adopted bylaws. They procured architectural and engineering services, and our team was able to support the authority in helping to secure a $300,000 grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission. And those funds will be used to help offset the architectural and engineering service cost for the design of the facility. Now, where are we? Right now, we're eagerly awaiting information from the Virginia Passenger, or the Virginia, yeah, sorry, the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority, or VPRA. That's a state agency that is dedicated to getting passenger rail services built and operational. The 30% design drawings, we anticipate those at the end of November, beginning of December. Within that was the environmental analysis, and that we know will be presented, or we understand will be presented, at the December 6, the VPRA board meeting. And we anticipate that Uptown Christiansburg Mall location, at least that's what the environmental analysis has shown to date, that they would be looking. In the interim, there is a second train from Roanoke, so that's helpful. But, yeah, so I just wanted to provide those two updates for you on the pandemic response after-action report. Thank you all for the service and regional coordination on that, and then as well as what's coming with passenger rail. So I'll pause there and be happy to take any comments or questions that you have.
Okay. Let's start down here. Steve, do you have any comment or question you'd like to ask?
No, I think Kevin has filled me in on most everything over the past few months. I think I'm good. Thank you, though, Kevin.
Okay, and Supervisor King?
I don't have any questions, but I do appreciate all your work on this.
Okay, and Supervisor Demonts?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to make you think a little bit. Remind me of the seven localities that participate in the Passenger Rail Authority.
Sure. So it's Montgomery County, Giles County, Plasky County, city of Radford, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Plasky County in town. So, but in double count, but...
I knew Montgomery, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Radford, and so I was reading that going, who are the other ones? That's great. Thank you so much for everything that the Regional Commission does, and for this presentation. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, Supervisor Byrne?
Similarly, thank you, Kevin. Great job. I know in my role as CEO of the United Way, it was incredibly helpful when COVID hit full force to be able to help the other nonprofits navigate the new world. And you all, including Holly back there, as well as many other people, were just lifesavers. I'm sure you've saved, well, anyway, you know that you've saved lives, so thank you for everything that you do and all the great work. And I love the data. That chart's pretty cool. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any questions. I'd like to say thank you for all the work you've done during both of these events and for the presentation. It's a lot of numbers and a lot of information there. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Does staff want to say anything? I know, Craig, you work very closely with this.
I did, and I shared with Kevin and Holly just prior to the meeting. As I've been cleaning up the office and going through things that have accumulated over time, one of the biggest stacks that I had in the office were all the things that we were doing in March and April and May of 2020. And, you know, we just did them. I mean, there was no, there was no manual on what we needed to be doing, but collectively, as a region, we just pulled together and got it done. And, you know, I don't want to say that COVID was a highlight of my career, but it really, you know, with Angie's leadership on the fiscal side, it just, we pulled together and got it done. And, you know, and that's a testament to Kevin and his leadership, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would just add that it was recognized throughout the state that what you did here was like sort of to set the table for others to follow. So thank you for what you've done with both of these issues, and we'll just keep pushing on that rail.
Yes, please.
Keep it on track. All right. Thank you. All right. Well, that leads us to our next item. We have a public hearing, and this is to amend proffered conditions and concept plan for the preserves at Walnut Springs Shaw Development. And Bree, you're going to lead us through this?
I believe so.
All right.
Good evening. So as you stated, this is the request by Shaw Development, Agent Forsite Design Services, to amend the proffered conditions and the approved concept plan for the rezoning for the preserve at Walnut Springs Major Subdivision. This is the one out off Prices Fork. You can see here it's located in the northwestern portion of the county, right outside the town of Blacksburg. And this is a zoomed-in view. You can see Prices Fork Road along here. This is an aerial view of the property, and you can see these little cutouts. These are what is left from the subdivision plats that they've already had approved and come through you. And then here is the zoning map. You can see it's zoned to PUD Res, as is the property across the road, and then there's R1 here. So in March of 2019, you approved the rezoning of 155.73 acres located off Prices Fork Road from agriculture to PUD Res with several proffered conditions and a concept plan. Those had a variety of housing types, single-family, duplexes, townhomes, apartments. And the way the proffer was written, they could have a maximum of each type because they wanted some flexibility based on the market. The maximum density of the overall development, however, is contained in a separate proffer, and that limits it to 2.185 units per acre. So this was the approved concept plan. The items in blue here are townhouse lots. These pinkish ones were proposed duplex lots, and then everything else was a variety of single-family dwellings on different size, different size lots with different size housing. The back was the apartment area here, and that is the area that is up for consideration tonight when they look at the proffered conditions. So they have noticed a trend and a desire to have more townhouses. Those are under high demand at the moment. So their previously approved maximum was 154 townhomes, and they are requesting to change their proffered condition to allow 209. And then for the multifamily apartments, they had previously requested 108, and they want to lower that to 84. And we know those numbers don't match out, but they are still limited to that overall maximum of 2.185 in density. So it would not change the overall number of units. They just want flexibility. If they need more townhomes, they have the flexibility to make that happen. If they do see the need for some apartments in the future, they might still have some flexibility to let that happen as well. So this is the amended concept plan, and basically, all it does is remove those apartment areas here to leave that open for that flexibility. And then they have submitted one of the proposed townhouse layouts, should they decide to do townhouses in that area. You can see those here. And these roads would be private. They would not be public. So the change in the unit composition is not anticipated to generate additional traffic. There is actually another proffer. There is actually another proffer in that rezoning that if they exceed 2,701 daily trips, they have to have a new TIA done and then any improvements associated with that. So they most likely do not want to exceed that amount because they don't want to have to go back through the traffic impact analysis. VDOT took no exception to the proffer amendments. The new roads would be privately maintained and a full review of the transportation impacts would be conducted during the site plan review for that section. So the development is served by public water and sewer provided by the PSA. There are no impacts on future water and sewer needs. No additional environmental impacts are anticipated. However, Environmental Services will look at any changes needed to erosion sediment control and stormwater at the time of the site plan revision should this be approved. These are the sections of our comprehensive plan that apply. PLU 1.63 A and B discusses village expansion. The proposed change to the unit composition does allow with those goals of the comprehensive plan, does still provide that variety of housing that we're looking for. And it does maintain the previously proved request as well. The proposed changes to the concept plan and proffered conditions provide flexibility for the developer while not generating any additional impacts. Administrative review of the revised site plan and submitted subdivision plaits will also ensure further compliance. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on October 11th. No members were present to speak for the public. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of those on a six to three vote. We had three members absent. Six oh vote, three people absent. These are the proffered conditions. Number one, just changes the date of the concept plan. And there has been a further change that's reflected in your ordinance that basically says the last approved plan is the one that that should move forward. And then the other one is number three here, which changes those number of dwelling units maxims. Joining property owner notices were sent out. Public hearing signs were placed on the property and we did run the local newspaper ad. Staff has not received any inquiries to this. There may be people here to speak tonight. I know Mr. Neal and Mr. Connor are both here. And I believe Mr. Neal has a small presentation and he'll also be able to answer any questions you have. For now, I'll take any questions you have for staff.
Okay, how about on this side? Are there any questions that you'd like to ask? How about over here? Okay, Supervisor Byrne?
One of the benefits of being on the plant, being liaison to the Planning Commission, I get to see this multiple times. So I get to kind of ask a few questions since I can't ask them then. So in the earlier slide where you showed the whole layout, you showed this section, Justin Brown. And then the new layout being all those apartment buildings are gone and these new townhomes are in place. They don't show where they're going to put the apartments.
Right, because at this time, they're not positive there will be any apartments. It could just go in with just the townhomes and no apartments.
So it could be up to 209 in townhomes and zero in apartments.
It could be, yes.
Okay.
As long as they don't exceed that maximum density for the entire project of 2.185 units per acre.
And that includes the 209 and the other number for the apartments? So they could come back and build more townhomes and not have any apartments whatsoever?
That is correct.
Okay. So a lot of the numbers in this presentation have units per acre. What about the number of people that can actually, you know, bed, bedrooms, I guess?
So there is another proffer, but I believe it is just related to, let me get to the proffer statement, to the apartments that limits the number of bedrooms. Townhouse and apartment dwelling units shall be limited to no more than three bedrooms per unit. So that proffer would still stand.
Do we have any idea how many bedrooms there were before this new proposal?
I do not. You can ask Mr. Neal or Mr. Connor.
Okay, and do we know how many daily trips were before this proposal?
So they are doing a tally on those as they submit their subdivision plaits for approval. They are giving us that, that number of daily trips. So we can compare that for VDOT. I'm not sure where we're at on that count, but I know we are not at the limit yet. We're nowhere near.
And just correct me, because I may say this incorrectly. The water and the sewer was actually a public-private thing. They paid, they or whomever in the developments, the two developments over there, paid for the water and sewer to get there and then the PSA took it over for free?
Correct. PSA will take, I'm not sure if there was a fee, but PSA will take over the water system when it is completely in place. They did have to build a sewer, a pump station for this site.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Bree.
Thank you.
Oh, Darryl.
I have a question.
Yeah. You're muted, yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Bone had on a lot of my questions. I do have one. So the townhomes, I assume the apartments would be rentals? And the townhomes, will they be rentals or they be owned?
They could be either, it could be a mixture. Their Eagle Construction, who's currently building, from what I have seen, their norm is to sell them. So what we have created so far for townhomes are fee simple lots that can be sold. Now someone could buy those and then rent it out. There is nothing against that. But so far, everything we've seen with the townhomes, they've been on their own individual lot that could be offered for sale.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Bree. And next.
I'm going to pull up Mr. Neal's presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Neal's going to come up, okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate your time this evening. I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Mr. Meadows, it's been an honor to work with you all these years. Appreciate everything you've done and you've always treated us extremely fairly with honesty and integrity. Appreciate it very much. But I, and then I'll also say, Bree has done an unbelievable job here. So I don't have a whole lot more to add to what she did. Both myself, John Neal with Foresight Design and Kevin Connell with Shaw Development are here this evening answering any questions you have. As we noted, and I'll try to, try to answer some of your questions as we go through here a little bit. The brown area there, that's the only area that we're really talking about that we modified that concept plan. We had some apartment outlines on that, which was proffered. And so we felt like we needed to take those off if we're placing townhomes there. And then this is that zoomed in. So this is the new area where it's just, it's just blank slate right now. But we did submit kind of a, an alternative, or sorry. Well, I'll run through the numbers real quick. We, a net change of plus 55 townhome potentials and then a net change of minus 24 apartments. No change, the critical part of that is no change in the overall density of the development. And that traffic number as well is kind of, was really one of the driving factors, if you'll recall, from the original rezoning. That was kind of the driving factor. And so we've held firm on that and we're meeting that as we move forward with, with all the constructions going on. And here was, here was kind of the apartment layout that you saw previously in that concept plan. And then here's one alternative for the townhomes. You know, I can't promise anything, but I think right now the intention is to build all townhomes. Because Eagle is selling those townhomes. People are purchasing those. It's, it's looking positive and that's the way they want to continue. And I'll give you a few recent pictures if you, if you haven't been out there. This is at the, at the top of the hill coming into the subdivision. Here's some of the single family homes on the right going in. And then here's some of the townhomes that are under construction. And if you've got good enough vision, you can see that little red stamped sold sign on the front of that townhouse. There's quite a few of those out there. There are 10 of those townholds, townhouses already sold. I think we have 17 under construction right now. And we have three houses that are actually occupied with people living in MCOs and they're, they live there. And then two model homes on Prices Fork Road for, for sales offices. And then here's some of the houses that are under construction. You can kind of see all the different phases. In the back, you can see that house is completely constructed. To the right, we have one house that's framed up. And then right in the, in the middle there, you can see a house that's got the, the foundation in place. And so construction is continuing on with all the single family homes as well. And that's pretty much all I have with regard to the bedrooms. Like I said, we had that limit for three bedrooms, whether it's townhouses or apartments. And we felt like that was a good limiting factor. We're not pursuing kind of what you would term as this high-density apartment living or things like that. And I, and I apologize, I didn't follow the water and sewer question.
I know that the developments brought the water or are bringing the water and sewer there. But PSA is taking it over.
Yes, correct.
Does the PSA have to pay to take it over?
Uh, no ma'am, we, we paid for the.
But you guys paid millions of dollars to get it there.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Yeah, paid for all the design and construction of the sewer and then it has been turned over to the Public Service Authority. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Demonts?
I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, thanks for being here and for your presentation. I, I like the idea or I like the, the design where you have different lot sizes, different products. You'll hit a variety of incomes. I really appreciate that. I know that the bus shelters you're coordinating with Montgomery County Public Schools. And just out of curiosity, has anybody checked with, I know Blacksburg Transit doesn't run out there as of right now, but could they in the future with your current design?
Uh, they certainly could because all of our roads, other than those townhome, internal townhome kind of alleys, roads, I'm pointing to the screen there. You can see it. If I can get, I can't get this.
We can see it.
You can see it?
Yeah, you're all over the place.
All right, well, there we go. So, so this road right here, this would be private, of course. But this is a public street here and this is a public street here. And they have cul-de-sacs and everything that a, that a Blacksburg Transit bus could go on the public road, turn around and stop at a bus stop. So yes, absolutely. We have the internal infrastructure that would allow that, yes. I think to answer your question.
And then did this plan change any of your community facilities? Like your dog park, your tennis courts, anything like that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Everything's the same.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Yeah, I'll ask a question about the cul-de-sacs. As you probably know, I drive a school bus. And most of the cul-de-sacs I'm in today, you cannot make a circle. You have to back up. And I know Blacksburg Transit doesn't do that. So just.
Yeah, we, our cul-de-sac is a full VDOT standard cul-de-sac. So I'm not sure which cul-de-sacs maybe give you trouble and certainly.
Phillips Acres would be one.
Phillips Acres.
And they've always got vehicles sitting in them too. It's another problem. But anyway, this is just for information.
Understood, yes, sir.
Anyone down here? Okay, Supervisor Fitchakowski?
Good to see you, Mr. Neal.
Yes, sir, you too.
I was just curious as to why the private roads? Are they built to a VDOT standard so that they later could be brought into the system?
So it's just from the, the layout of the lots that we have and the roads. Those roads will be full width roads effectively VDOT sized. But we're not having them taken over because of some of the geometry from the, like the curves and things like that.
Okay, so if in the future, the years down the road, that the folks living there, if they wanted to have VDOT take over that, they would have to make those improvements to the road in order to get VDOT to accept, right?
Right, and one of the, so these roads are more, they're, they're hard service in the full width, but we will, we will most likely have parking on them. So there'll be more like access drives versus roads. And that's where the, the thing where VDOT would not want to take those over is parking, like on-street parking or off-street parking.
I guess there's some kind of homeowners association or something that would take care of the maintenance more.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Supervisor King?
On that private section Supervisor Steve was talking about, is it going to be able to get emergency vehicles on that road even with cars parked there?
Oh, yes, sir. So I, I should say, I meant to say that the parking is pull-in parking off the street. So there will not be parking on the street on the full street width. So yes, the emergency vehicles will have their full, full use of the street itself.
If, if you have three bedrooms, how many parking spots will each one have?
Uh, so some of these, some of these may have garages, but others will have a minimum of two parking spaces. And then we will most likely have some off-site parking. You can see for overflow. And get right in there. We're showing some parking there as well.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Supervisor Demonts?
Sorry, I should have asked this initially.
Okay.
Um, what's the square footage of the smallest lot sizes in the townhome section?
Oh, wow.
It's not.
I think they are probable, so our, most of our townhome widths right now, so I can't speak to these because they'll still be under design. So they may change widths and things like that. But right now, our townhomes that are platted and existing and under construction are 20-foot wide by typically 100-foot deep.
Okay.
So about 2,000 square feet.
Okay. I like that, that's just going back to my comments on affordability and a variety of income types that takes some of the land cost out. So I, I appreciate that.
Well, one of, I will mention, one of the things that I think is a, is a pretty big positive, you can see it a little bit here. Those, those purple lots there are duplex lots, which is a housing type that's not been constructed in quite a while. And we do think that that, that adds a little bit to the affordability of, of living in the neighborhood.
Agreed.
Any other questions? Following up on the private road, so that means, I know we didn't have any snow last year, but if it snows, like who removes snow and all that good stuff?
I'm sorry, the homeowners association will be responsible for all the private drives, including the alleys. So we have some alleys as well. They'd be responsible for all the snow removal for everything on the private side.
So the folks that are buying know that going in, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Because otherwise we get calls. Okay, anyone else have a question? Well, thank you for that additional information, very, very helpful.
Yes, ma'am, thank you all.
Okay. We had no one that signed up for this public hearing, but if there are folks in the audience that do want to address the board, you just need to come up and give your name and address. And you have four minutes to address the board and a yellow light will go off when there's one minute left. Is there anyone out there that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing no one, then we'll close this public hearing. And then that will take us to our next item of business, which is public address. And public address, we had sign out, sign up sheets out front and we have some folks that did sign up. And so after that fact, following the names on the sign up sheet, other speakers in the audience will be allowed to speak. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. And again, the yellow light will go off when you have one minute left. All comments must be directed to the chair and other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written comments and our comments to the supervisors with the board of the clerk, who is at the end there. And speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in personal attacks, use profanity or abusive language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. Accepted adequate is not to applaud or make loud responses. Okay, with that being said, we do have two individuals that have signed up. And our first individual is Mr. Wayman Pack. And he will be followed by Ms. Susan Miller. Good evening.
Afternoon, Board. My name is Wayman Pack. I'm from Roanoke, Virginia, on Piney Woods Road. And the last meeting that I attended, I do have a few things to say about that. And I guess Mr. Fitchakowski can, can look at this as well. But there seems to be confusion as to what qualifies a volunteer for active and life memberships in our organizations. And while understanding that each department has a degree of autonomy in its bylaws, I believe that this is something that should be standardized throughout all of our county fire and rescue departments, especially if the county provides life insurance for these groups. Why should one department perform the same service in the same county require differing times for these designations in another? I also believe that all of these volunteer departments should conduct a I also believe that all of these volunteer departments should conduct a limited background check, such as the one mentioned by Supervisor Demonts on all new members. Now, speaking to the discussion on the frequency of the real estate assessments, as mentioned by Mr. McGruder at the previous meeting of the 95 counties in Virginia, 66% of them reassess on a four-year or longer basis. Seems to me that if changing to a shorter frequency had obvious advantages, that there wouldn't be 66 of Virginia counties doing it every four years. On Slide 2, the code, and thank you Marty for providing me with that statute, state that Virginia allows reassessments on a four-year, biennial or annual basis. However, because Montgomery has a population of more than 50,000, we may conduct a reassessment every three years. If this body wishes to shorten the current frequency, why wasn't this option discussed? If you're interested, the first sentence of this statute explicitly states, there shall be a general reassessment of real estate every four years, or if determined by a majority vote of the county's Board of Supervisors every three years. The last statement, sentence of this statute, states that nothing in this section shall affect the power of any county to use the annual or biennial assessment method as authorized by law. I want to emphasize another thing that Mr. McGruder stated during his presentation. There are no such things as one-time cost. Equipment regularly needs updating and/or fails, offices need updating, staff receives salary increases, et cetera. If this board is dead-set on hiring their own staff to conduct these reassessments, we need to go into this with our eyes wide open. We currently hire an outside contractor to perform our reassessments every four years. What do these contractors do for us when they're not performing our reassessments? Point I'm trying to make is, what will our employees do in the off-years when there are no reassessments being performed? One of the concerns I heard that there are no county employees to hear complaints or answer questions about reassessment values. Also heard the county already needs to hire for certain departments. If we continue to use contractors and if the Commission of Revenue is one of the county departments requesting new hires, why not try to hire a couple of qualified assessors for that department? We could then have those employees with assessor qualifications serve as liaisons between the contractor and public, allowing them to address citizens' concerns by appointment. And as far as people concerned with contractors coming on their property to do assessments, I personally don't see this as a valid concern. These assessors have the same qualifications to perform this duty as any qualified county employee would have concerning land values and areas of growth. Each of these contractors also is required to prominently display their identification. I am sure that any county employees performing this function would have provided identification as well. And I am further sure that most of the residents contacted by a county employee would know them any better than they would know a contractor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Miller?
My name is Susan Miller. I'm the chairman of the Montgomery County Parks and Rec Commission. And did he come with, no, and Mitchell is back there. He is the person in charge. Mr. Meadows, you're the best. Sorry to see you go. To the Board of Supervisors. I would like to speak on behalf of the quorum from the meeting of October 12th of the Parks and Recreation Commission about the larger field that has been requested by a few citizens for the Auburn Park project. I have brought along the, and emailed each of you this statement along with some facts for you to review before you look to make a decision on having the larger field added to the park. Not only would this change make an extreme delay in finishing the park, but what good could significantly increase the cost of the build. The commission feels this field is not a demand for our Parks and Rec Department, but more of a demand for a travel ball team and school teams. Parks Recreation has not had a demand for boys 13 to 15 for baseball since 2019. In addition to this, when the need is there, all recreation departments across the New River Valley make the proper accommodations and they start the season when the high schools finish their seasons and the use of the school fields when the school season is finished. The field sizes that are currently in the project for Auburn Park are the ones that are in demand and the interchangeable, and are interchangeable to suit the majority of the age groups. In 2018, a public input meeting was held at Auburn High School and a survey was passed out to get the citizen input on the park. The engineers designed the park based on the survey citizens' requests and the input of the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is not a new plan that has just been drafted. This facility has been in the works for five years and during this time, there was never a plan to include the field being requested now. The need for the current field in design, which would include four 25, 225-foot fields, is in greater demand for the variety and the age groups that Montgomery County Parks Recreation serve. Compared to the middle and high school age groups that have the fields already at Auburn High School, for three teams to include middle school, JV and varsity. While Parks and Recreation is serving about 19 baseball and softball teams in the spring and currently 11 baseball and softball teams in the Auburn District just this fall season, the numbers are sure to rise over the next five to 10 years as the community grows. In a perfect world, we should have a field for each age group, boy and girl, but unfortunately, having the space, budget and staff for this is a far reach. We just ask that you look at the greater picture and review the facts before a decision is made. Susan M. Miller, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Those were the only two citizens we had that signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Mr. Connor?
Kevin Connor with Shaw Development. Two things, my Shaw Development hat, Ms. Bone, we're about $12 million into $18 million so far, so we're spending the money out there to provide a great place for the citizens, citizens of Montgomery County. And Mr. Meadows, thank you. Your door's always been open, you've always listened, been fair, and I think, in the video, I think Ms. Hill said integrity, that's, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time to address the board? Okay, seeing no one, we will close public address and we will move on to our next item. Is there addendum tonight?
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, so that takes us to work session. And do I have a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
In a second, okay. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, we are now into work session and a couple items that we are going to discuss. I guess we'll start with the first one.
Yes ma'am, Board members, this evening, we have a couple of items to review with you. First, Officer of Election compensation. This matter was brought to us by the Director of Elections, Ms. Byer, with some concerns. There was information gathered, I believe Ms. Byer provided this to us, Angie, this-
Yes, by the officer, the Director of Elections.
Yes, and what you have before you is a chart that shows the current officer pay for the officer of elections, the Assistant Chief and the Chief. Also, you see listed Roanoke City, Roanoke County, Campbell County, Lynchburg, Franklin County, Bedford County's current rate and Bedford County's proposed rate. Currently, our pay is competitive with several of those, but as you can also see, especially some of our neighbors to our east are, are higher than that. Angie, anything you want to add?
The only other thing I would add is, our current Officer of Election and Assistant Chief pay are the same, and I think that there is a need to separate those and provide additional compensation to the Assistant Chiefs. And finally, our Officer of Election pay is below minimum wage if you divide the pay for the day by the number of hours that are usually spent. $170 would barely be minimum wage for those individuals, so that's just another item for consideration. These rates were last updated in 2021.
The last time we talked about this, if you remember, we was $5 ahead of everybody. Of course, we was gonna go even with everybody and then we moved up five more dollars. Now we're way behind. And just my opinion, you know, it's getting hard to get people to do this. It really is. And it's, I mean, you know, this here benefits everybody in the county that votes.
Okay.
I agree with Supervisor King. I also think that we should at least be at minimum wage, but I would like to propose an idea of 200 for officers, 225 for Assistant Chiefs and 250 for Chiefs, just to toss out there as a starting point for discussion.
Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to add to that. Is there, Marty, is there a way to annually approve whatever the raises the county's getting, that they are extended to these people in a separate vote?
I think that'd be difficult. It'd be better just to have it in action by the board each year.
All right, so Supervisor Demonts, repeat again what you said, so I can write that down.
Sure, 200 for Officer of Election, 225 for Assistant Chief and 250 for Chief.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's a good starting point to discuss. What do you all think? What, how do you feel?
Is Roanoke City, what, what's their population?
Just under 100.
Slightly less than 100.
And then Roanoke County's is slightly under 100 as well.
When you look at this chart here, the city stands out as being excessive, but it's not. If you work a 16-hour day at minimum wage or the county, our starting pay, that's exactly where it should be.
You're talking about Roanoke City?
Yeah. That's where it should be. So I would say that's probably where we should start. And then if you divide the other ones up, it's basically a $5 per hour increase for Assistant and then more for Chief.
Are you saying Roanoke City? Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, Roanoke City.
So you're proposing to start there with the 240, the 320 and the 345?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. I'm with you on that.
Okay.
If I can just chime in, I know from talking with Connie and what Supervisor King mentioned earlier, it's getting harder and harder to get folks to volunteer for that long of a day. You know, unfortunately, as, as politics have really gotten into some folks when they go in, it, it's not an easy job. Sometimes folks are quite talkative when they're at the polls. And so it takes, it, it's, it's a long day and it takes people who have the ability to be able to manage that. So for what it's worth, I think that would be very well received.
Would it go into effect with this year's election?
Certainly could.
Yes, if you approve it, it would be for this election.
Field of dreams.
That's right.
I know when I had inquired to Connie about what their duties were and their hours, I was kind of surprised at what a long day that was, so. And again, like I said, looking at the chart, it looks like, oh, okay, Roanoke City's way out of, way out of whack here, but no, they're not. They're right on the, right on the mark, so I think it's reasonable.
You think, you think about, you say so many hours a day, but if they have a glitch in there, they're gonna be there longer.
And you got bright ends running too.
I've said in some of them things, nine o'clock at night.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Yeah, and not only a long day, but I don't know how many of you spent eight or 10 hours on your feet all day, which some of those people do, that's even worse. And I've done that and it ain't easy. So I'd be okay with that too.
Okay. And I would agree, I know some of my friends that used to work at the polls no longer do so, and one of the reasons, well, they're older and the day was just too long. So then you've got, you're competing, you know, a lot of people can't get off work to do that, so I'm in favor of doing whatever we can do, so. Is everyone on board with matching Roanoke City?
I like to move a little bit over it.
You want to go over Roanoke City?
At least 10. Last time we went over five over everybody.
So you want to add $10 to each of the, like make it 250 and 330 and what, 365?
55.
55, is that what you want to do?
My, myself, yeah, I mean, you know, that, like you said, nobody wants to do this. And we do appreciate anybody steps up that will do it.
Okay, what do you all think about Todd's proposal? Is there consensus just for that? Okay, so under, when we come out later out of work session, we could add that to new business, would that be appropriate? Okay.
And of course, there'll be a budgetary impact from that, but I'm certain that it's not something that we-
I looked at that today in broad terms and we can revisit that after the election and we know how much we have to pay for the people that she has to provide, because she does have people that have started working already and so we'll need to look at that. I think that there is sufficient funding, but if there's not, we can transfer funding from contingencies.
Okay, all right. All right, well, we've got that one solved, let's move on to the next one.
The next item on work session this evening is the opioid abatement authority. Holly Lasko's here this evening to give us an update on the NRV Recovery Ecosystem Program. Holly, good to see you this evening.
Welcome.
There, I think I've got it all set. Everyone can see it now? Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board, Greg and the rest of the staff. Thanks so much for giving me some time tonight to talk to you about this project. Go on to my next one. Can I do it this way? Okay. First, I want to thank Montgomery County for supporting the application through the, through your matching commitment and of course, also your commitment to be the fiscal agent on this project. You're well-trusted in the region and it made a big difference when this is a heavy lift for our region, there's a big need, but we needed to have a trusted fiscal agent, kind of like with the COVID response. And it was obvious that Montgomery County was the right choice, so we really appreciate that. It also, we were able then to apply for this cooperative program through the opioid abatement authority. It's an exciting opportunity to address significant concerns in our region and the state cooperative program allowed us to leverage locally allocated funds to create a larger regional program. As we successfully, as we successfully roll out the elements of the program, there's a potential for over $18 million in funding over five years with this program. New River has been a leader in cooperative activity over the years, addressing most recently the COVID pandemic, as Kevin presented today. Also, he spoke about the passenger rail and broadband projects. Opioid abatement is something that we also needs, know, needs to be addressed regionally. This program is more of the same with all five of our jurisdictions fully participating and providing matching funds, as well as seven regional organizations enhancing and expanding services in the program as well. This work will continue to bridge efforts across the localities and organizations and create opportunities for innovation and partnership to deliver necessary services and programming to enhance and build a true recovery ecosystem to fully address- to enhance and build a true recovery ecosystem to fully address opioid abatement in our Building the proposal was also a regional lift. The commission hosted listening sessions through the months of March and April with participating local governments and agency staff with expertise in critical infrastructure and service area that impact our recovery ecosystem. These included areas such as transportation, drug testing, prevention and education, supportive housing, treatment and recovery, and harm reduction. Special attention was paid to addressing the needs of various populations, including youth, workforce, families, and older adults, all of which are impacted by the opioid crisis. The Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority requires that this be focused on data-driven, evidence-based, and informed activities to address the needs in our region. With expertise at the table and the experiences they shared, we built a multi-bucketed, as I like to call it, approach grounded in community evidence with a focus on building up what is working and protecting what we value in our region. Messaging and project promotion will be developed based on that model, with special attention targeting different populations with necessary information from trusted sources, timed to be the most impactful. As Dr. Bissell often said during the pandemic, right message, right messenger, right time. We're going to be working on that same model here. The wheel on the side is the vital conditions for health and well-being, and it's intended to guide alignment across federal funding agencies. And that's also part of our work to try to build some sustainability and success in this work, so we'll position ourselves for continued funding when this grant funding is over. It's a strength-based and community-driven program to, for health and well-being. The elements on the wheel are as critical to individuals as they are to communities, and they'll be helpful to our service organizations and our leadership team to ensure that we're building enhancing and enhancing programs that will have long-term health, wellness, and benefits for our whole region. Here's those buckets. There's a lot of them. So the project buckets, as I call them, include all the elements we gathered from our regional partners during the listening sessions. They were built upon evidence-based and informed actionable work in each locality. Some efforts will be pilots in specific areas with the plan to expand as we learn and adjust these efforts, such as the mobile unit, mobile unit and school prevention programming. Others are enhancements of current programming, important work that we know is happening, such as our drug courts and our treatment facilities. And we're also built in time for studies in this region for areas that we know we are needed, but we need to gather more information and resources to address these things, such as supportive housing and adolescent treatment facilities that are more close to home. The big spreadsheet. So the regional agencies will be the predominant boots on the ground in this work. These are people who have been doing this work in our region for years, and they know the, they know the communities, they know the needs, and this spreadsheet shows how the funding in the programmatic areas will be distributed. The two columns on the right show the potential breakdown between the OAA-awarded grant funds and the local opioid allotted funding from the localities. To simplify the match distribution, these were largely split between three of the larger project partners, New River Valley Community Services, New River Health District, and the locally-driven TDO, our Temporary Detaining Order, programs. And for Giles County, the Fitness Recovery Program. So how will we manage to do all of this work? The New River Valley Recovery Ecosystem Leadership Team, which has been meeting regularly already since August and includes leaders from across the region, each one of the localities and hospitals and our regional organizations, this group will provide regular review of projects and services as they are developed and implemented across the region, and allows a space for discussion and sharing of successes and concerns. The commission will provide day-to-day management and oversight needed to ensure compliance and reporting for the opioid abatement program, as well as troubleshooting and correction as guided by the leadership team and our funding organization. I'll provide program management at this end. Our in-house fiscal team will support the financial reporting and report building. We're in the process, as Kevin noted, in hiring a project manager and at least two community accountability coordinators that will directly support this project and me and ensure we're tracking and assisting agencies and local governments to achieve the goals and accountability for expenditures accurately and effectively. All reporting will be developed by the commission for review by Montgomery County and submitted to the OAA as our fiscal agent. Reporting and compliance, last few things. The contract under development will guide this work this fiscal year. Because this is a new program for the state, actually for the nation, for us, the development of this contract has been complex. Thank you, Marty. And we have to take it a little longer than it's typical. And so we will be allowed to have some carryover into year two without penalty. However, it's possible some of this funding, which is for personnel in a lot of cases, may not, it may slightly lower our year-two funding, because we won't probably be able to expend all the personnel funding, though I suspect our agencies will do everything they can to get that work rolling as quickly as possible. We will, as is noted, will be applying again in April for our year-two funding. So I do believe that that will move much smoothly and more efficiently, because already the opioid abatement authority staff have suggested they're creating some templates, a little easier way to do, set up the funding structures. And we're learning a ton as we do this. Local allocation may grow as the settlements are finalized, but we don't expect that the state pool will grow. So another reason that we applied for five-year funding is so that we could be on the books for that funding, and this, that commitment from the state is to us already, as long as we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. It's been a heavy lift and for a very important need. Thank you so much for your role in this effort, and I welcome your questions and ideas along the way, as we are truly in this together.
Okay. All right. Let's start with questions. Are there any questions down on this side? All right. Supervisor Byrne?
Thanks, Holly. I didn't hear everything, only because I was taking notes, so I may ask you to repeat some things.
Okay.
So it just so happened that in the last week, I watched Dope Sick on Hulu, the eight episodes. It was pretty disturbing, but I know that Dope Sick as the book for Beth Macy has been out for years and years and years, and I'm just not a reader when I have to, like, dig into things like that. So I'm so grateful that I was able to watch the whole thing and understand at least some of the problems. If you would go back to your slide number four, do the, it's a great graphic. Do the colors of the sticky notes, other than the green, I get the green, but color of the sticky notes mean anything?
These were part of our listening sessions, and I, it's really just put together here to make it look interesting when I submit it for the grant. But we did everything from brainstorming to what are the assets. We really did want to start with assets. What are the things we're already do, feel like we're doing well in the region, and how can we enhance those? And then where are the gaps? And then who are the populations that we want to target?
Have we, as the New River Valley, ever done a multi-issue program? I know COVID, to me, is sort of like, it's not one-dimensional, because I completely understand it's not. It's one problem, and I understand opioids, one problem, but, you know, it just seems like five to ten times more complex than, you know.
Shots and arms.
Yeah, shots and arms, mask up, communicate.
I think you're right. I think, and I think one of the things we learned during the pandemic is that the underlying concerns in our communities contribute to the issues and, that we have. So taking a look, it's part of the reason we did such a complex application, as we wanted to address everything from prevention through treatment to recovery, because, because they're all interconnected. I mean, we have to be able to talk about things. One of the pieces we're working on right now is an anti-stigma campaign, to be able just to talk about addiction in a way that makes us all understand that we are all impacted by it, whether or not we consider ourselves addicted to things or not. So you're right, it's complex, and I think this region has, has many regional partners who have been addressing that kind of work for a long time and want this, it's a real opportunity with this funding to do something more impactful in our region.
And I realize that we have, you know, done stuff in the past. I think of the livability initiative, for example, or what have you.
Comprehensive plans are very complex sometimes, too.
Right, but this is, this is just different. In all this, where does, like, the Suboxone, methadone, needle exchanges, or any, any kind of stuff like that, like, fall, or what, what?
I mean, we have to talk about all of them as part of a continuum of care for folks like that. Medically assisted treatment, MAT, is, that would include things like Suboxone. There are already people, like, the New River Valley Community Health Center is providing medically assisted treatment. They have the highest level of skilled, informed folks. I know Dr. Bissell has an interest in getting before this board to talk about her programming as a medical professional. She can provide a lot more detail in that space, and all of those pieces need to be part of the conversation as we move this work forward.
And do you have a commission or board that this group reports to?
There is that. We formed the leadership, the, yeah, the leadership team, which includes membership from each one of the localities and leadership from each of the organizations that are participating.
Primarily the local government managers from each of the agencies.
And then what's the total dollars in the first year for the NRV versus Montgomery County?
Almost three-point-four million total for, that includes the, I always break, one-point-two in matching allocation, and then the, here, I can pull up my app, pull that up. Do I have it in there? Where's my spreadsheet? Yeah, you're going to-
About two-point-two.
It's almost a, it's almost a two-to-one match.
Almost two-to-one, yeah. Two, almost, yeah. At the bottom, you can see is the total is on the left, and the middle one is the grant award in my spreadsheet, and then the last one is the matching funds. But those are also direct allocation from opioid settlement, which must be spent in one of these buckets.
But do you break it out ever by county?
By locality, yes.
We have that as well. Montgomery County's match is four-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. And then the state got a whole bunch of money that wasn't, is this the opioid settlement money, right?
Yes.
So each of the counties got a whole bunch of money, and then the state got a whole bunch more money, not just for state stuff, but to distribute?
That's what part of this is, is that competitive funding.
That's where the two-point-one.
And would you say that we're getting more than our fair share of this competitive?
I think this is our fair share, but we are the biggest award that they did.
Oh, that's nice. That's all I had. Thank you.
Supervisor Demont? I'll just add a comment first to say thank you to you for coordinating this effort as your discussion with Supervisor Bone eliminated. It is a lot of different categories, so you've got a lot of hats that you're wearing. I, I think until people are touched by somebody that's addicted, they, the problem is not as apparent. And my first ever encounter with somebody that was addicted to opioids, they were prescribed by their doctor, it was a senior citizen, it was prescribed to help her with the pain from arthritis, and then was in full-blown addiction in her seventies. And so I'm just really glad that, that the program that you're developing is going to address all of the parts of addiction that was often caused at no fault of the person that became addicted. So thank you very much for your work. It's very meaningful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Great job on this. I think it's just another testament of where the New River Valley comes together, all the governments and agencies, and all working towards the same goal, because I don't think opioid addiction, I don't think they look to see where the county line is before they cross. So I think it's real important, when you're coming up with a comprehensive program, to do that, to attack it that way. That way, nobody can run and hide, because we're all in the New River. So it's a, it's a good plan. You, on slide six, there was a mention of recovery fitness in the drug courts. Now, I know not all the drug courts do that.
Only Giles County right now is doing that, and they, we've put that forward as an evidence-informed process that they found very successful in Giles County. So we're going to be doing some assessment of that and sharing that across the region. I don't know that everyone's going to adopt recovery fitness, but there may be elements of that model that make sense in other localities, too. All the drug courts have some kind of activity that drug court participants do, and that could be something that people want to, want to consider for the future.
I have, I've just heard such good things about it, and I'm sure not all judges are going to want to put on their gym clothes and-
Judge Farrell, he's something.
Yeah, he does, but I'm sure there's other people that could probably run with that, and it just seems to make sense to me. You know, mind and body, you know, let them work together. I think it's, I think it's a great idea. You talked about, in a year, we've got to reapply.
Few months.
Do we have to, like, come up with results and show results, and do we expect results right away, or is this going to be taking time?
We have some performance measures that we'll be tracking. Mostly what we need to show, I think initially, is that we're trying to reach the populations that we say we're intending to reach, which I believe all of our service agencies are already doing. And our study work, because, because it's taken longer to get started, I believe that as long as we have put out some good faith in that outreach and gathering of information, we'll be in good shape. They all, the opioid abatement authority understands that this first year is going to be a little different than the other years, which is why the carryover is something that they, will, it's a gimme, pretty much, in the first year. But, well, hopefully, we'll have things to show. Everybody's ready to do this work.
Right. Well, you know, I've always been known as a pessimistic person, but I'm trying to be optimistic about this program, because there's nothing like it that I've ever seen before. Usually, government takes a big wad of money and throws it at one agency, and then they rubber stamp a bunch of people saying, hey, these are all success stories, and then, of course, a great number of them fall right back into it. And I don't think that's what you're talking about here. You're talking about the full circle of life, you might say, and by covering everything, I think that's a smarter way. So I hope this big wad of money that we're doling out is going to make a big difference. But thank you for all your hard work. I get to see it once a month anyway, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to thank you, and I agree with what's been said by my fellow supervisors, and this is such a critical problem, and it's, it's way more common than we even know. And I'm especially concerned about young people also. So I'm looking forward to, you know, what you'll have to report back, and I know it's a lot of work, though. So thank you for coming tonight, for letting us know about it, and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Holly.
Okay. All right.
I have one thing to add.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
At the next meeting, Marty has been working on a draft, along with Holly, of an operating agreement for all of the jurisdictions that are participating in this program. So we're going to bring it forward to the board of supervisors to approve, hopefully, and then that will get shared with the other partners, with the other localities, and that will help us move forward with receiving the funding. We have been awarded the funding. We haven't actually received the money yet until these other documents are in place, so that will be the next step.
Okay, so that's going to come to us at our next meeting?
Yes.
And you're thinking you want approval at that same meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so everybody read carefully, okay?
And I've heard a lot of good things. They're very happy they got you on board, Marty.
Okay. All right. So that brings us to our next item, very exciting item here, revenue sharing with county and schools, and I think we're going to get some information about that.
I believe Angie's going to lead us through this discussion.
Yes, thank you. At the August meeting of the board of supervisors and the school board, it was discussed that we look at a revenue sharing agreement and what the pros and cons to that were. So we've got a presentation put together, and we'll share some information about that. Staff compared the top seventy-five school divisions in Virginia based on total expenditures for operations, and we found that only twenty percent of those schools, there are seventy-five that fall into that category, only twenty percent of them, or fifteen, have revenue sharing agreements. The examples of revenue sharing agreements vary widely. Some of them are based on- Some of them are based on a percentage of general fund revenue. Some are a percentage of ongoing revenue in specific categories. Some of them pull out certain revenues. Some have more complex agreements. I think we've talked some about Roanoke County, which uses an index that's a very comp, it's relatively complicated. It takes into consideration a rolling three-year period, and they look at population, school enrollment, salary, and payroll numbers for the schools and the county as well. There is quite a number of factors to consider that we wanted to bring to you regarding revenue sharing agreements. First of all, one consideration is that it provides more certainty for schools and the county when determining how much the allocation will be from this county to the schools. While it does provide a little bit more information, because it would probably be based on a percentage of new revenue, the exact amount wouldn't be known until the revenue projections are received. However, as we go through the year and the revenue projections are updated, it would provide a little bit of guidance in, in an earlier stage. I think this might be the most important factor to consider. If we establish a revenue sharing agreement based on ongoing revenue and a percentage to be allocated to each entity, it assumes that the base allocation of funding between the county and the schools is accurate. So it assumes that because we're adding to the base in a certain formula, that that alignment is already correct. If the county or the schools are proportionately under or overfunded, the, the formula could actually magnify that. It limits the Board of Supervisors' flexibility a bit in addressing both county and school needs. If either the county or the schools needed more money for an initiative or some circumstance that arose, that would have to be addressed in a different way. There would not be a mechanism within the formula to address that. Another interesting factor that I don't think people always think about is if the schools, for instance, had a new initiative or new need of, say, a million dollars. These are just example numbers, so they aren't accurate. Don't get hung up on these. But just say we had a revenue sharing agreement that split new revenue 50/50, and the county or the schools, one group needed a million dollars, and that's how much a cent on the tax rate was. It would take a two-cent increase in order to meet that need because we would have to still split that. That could be addressed with a modification to the agreement. But as I'll discuss in a few minutes, the more you modify the agreement, the less effective it is. We noticed that a lot of modifications are discussed. Sometimes they're implemented, but they, that can create another item to debate in addition to whether or not a certain amount of funding is provided to the schools or the county. The agreement itself could be debated on an annual basis. When revenues are strong, it works. It works for everybody when revenues are strong because everything's okay. But when revenues are not as strong, whether there's not a lot of growth, it becomes a very significant challenge for both, both participants in the agreement. We say around here, it works when it works. It works when it's favorable to all the parties that are concerned. When we compare revenue estimates, if we had a revenue sharing agreement, it would limit the board's flexibility when additional dollars are received over the estimate. Sometimes I think we can think back to times that the county has received more than we have estimated, and that we know that the schools have a need or the county has a need, and we allocate that one-time funding to the need. The way the other agreements that we studied are set up, that split would happen with the actual revenue collected. So that would be a different scenario, and, and we wouldn't always be able to use the funds in the same way we have in the past. Likewise, if the revenue was less than we estimated, we appropriate the funding to the schools in the beginning. So the county would be the side that had to pick up that shortfall if the estimate was, if the actual collection was lower than the estimate. That was a lot of information and pretty quick. But if anybody has questions, I will be glad to entertain those. And then if you want to let us know how you want us to move forward with that. If you need more information, we can provide that as well.
Okay. Supervisor King, do you have anything right now?
Well, just one question, make sure I understand it. Just say if we went forward with this, and the county had a project, they needed a million dollars on with this money. Even though the schools didn't need that million dollars, we'd still have to give them a million dollars.
If the, if the revenue sharing agreement was a 50/50 split, that's correct.
That's what I'm saying.
If it was that we gave the schools 60% and the county kept 40, then it would be even more disproportionate.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, all right, let's go to Supervisor Demont.
I don't want to get too in the weeds on this because it's the first presentation. Can revenue sharing agreements exclude capital expenditures?
They, yes, if that was the will of the board, they could exclude capital expenditures.
Even more complicated to administer.
They actually usually do. Sometimes the, the capital expenditures are considered when the ratio is developed of the split. But usually, it's just for operations. That's how this, that formula applies.
As, as we looked at Roanoke Counties, Roanoke Counties is very complicated, and it does deal with capital separately, yeah.
I don't know that I'm, I'm necessarily interested in carrying on this conversation at this level. I think it would be interesting to talk about this in our next joint meeting with the School Board and possibly share this information as well, and just have an open and honest conversation about the pluses and minuses. When it's good, it's, it's going to work, and it's going to be great. But in a lean year, I can, I can see it going disastrously. So, um, I don't have any strong feelings about continuing the discussion, except that I would like to continue it in a future joint meeting with the schools.
Okay. Supervisor Bone?
So if we have a 50/50 agreement, just keeping numbers simple, can we allocate outside of it?
You would have to do, you could do that, but then it kind of erodes the point of having the agreement. You could.
But I mean, if there's an extenuating circumstance, like a roof falls down, falls in, for example. You know, there might be some short-term money that's needed to fix up an old building to make it so that, like, middle schoolers can move to.
And it probably would only be operating, so that probably wouldn't be something that you would have to do. You could still fund that the way you wanted to, the way you needed to fund that. But you could certainly make changes or not follow the agreement if the whole board decided not to follow the agreement. That would be.
But it would be an underlying agreement, and the intent would be follow it.
Right.
But in extenuating circumstances, you could work around it if necessary.
That's correct. You would have to evaluate the fact that the schools have signed the agreement as well. Obviously, in the example you gave, they would be in favor of having a different allocation. If it was that you decided the county was going to receive more funding than the agreement, then that would be a different issue, I think.
Right. So if, for example, Supervisor King referenced the fact that the schools might get a million dollars that they didn't necessarily need for the year, they could put it in reserves for future catastrophes, couldn't they?
They could. If it's an operating increase, they would get it every year. It wouldn't be a one-time. But yes, that's right. It, it's not a binding agreement, so you could change as you described.
Do you have any idea? You know, often you guys will tell us, the counties that are doing it, or the cities that are actually doing it, are they, are they similar to us, or are they the bigger cities, or are they a spread?
It's a, there is a spread, and I can get a list for you.
And I don't need it. Just knowing that there's a spread is fine.
It is, yes.
For those that have it, do they like it?
I don't know.
Do they say it's any better than?
It's not always better. It definitely is not always better. They told us that. I don't, I don't know.
Do they regret doing?
Ask them if they liked it. And we only speak to the staff, so I can't speak to the elected officials' position on that.
So, um, changing the subject, Mr. McGruder is exceptional at what he does. When he, in the parts that he comes and speaks to us about, that's what I know. But could, is he allowed to lowball, sort of like the state?
No.
The state lowballs, so that they have all the surplus and they can do whatever they want.
Not if he wants to keep his job.
Yeah, right.
If he intentionally did that, that would be.
No, I'm, I'm not saying intent, intentionally in and above himself. I'm saying for the benefit of this county, you know, lowball so that if there is a catastrophe mid-year, the county wouldn't have to absorb it.
That's not responsible budgeting, and we would not do that.
Yeah, okay.
Our reserves are in place to cover those kinds of things.
Can we reassess mid-year, though, if something happens?
Reassess?
Meaning, that's not the right term. I wish I had a source, but like.
Amend the budget?
Yeah.
Yes, we could amend the budget mid-cycle. If there, we do that when we approve appropriations that are over a certain amount. But we could also adjust revenue if, if there was a significant downturn in the middle of the year. Some jurisdictions had to do that when the pandemic occurred. I'm sorry.
Or upturn.
Yes, either.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I'm going to get this silly mic on. I think you answered my question in a roundabout way, but just to be more specific. So if we were to enter into a revenue sharing agreement, would it or could it have an expiration date to where we can get out of it?
It, you could do that, yes. Or you could just agree to get out of it.
And it's non-binding because it's subject to appropriation. And, and so if the board doesn't want to appropriate that money, it's not enforceable. Does that make sense?
To me, it sounds like it's just.
It's like a moral obligation.
To get into it.
Like a planning, yeah.
I do think that if we, this is my opinion, if we agreed to do this, the schools would rely on us doing that. So if we agreed to do it, and then the board said, oh, no, we're not going to do it, that would create ill will, I think.
Right. In my opinion, everything changes. I'm not sure when we get locked into something.
Okay. Supervisor Fitchakowski?
Yeah, I, I've talked to other county supervisors that have it, and it doesn't change anything. Stuff is going to come up. Incidents are going to occur. I think, I think a lot of school divisions think this is the answer to their revenue problems, but it's, it's not going to be. We're still going to live in the same world, and we're still going to have to face the same expenses. So I, I can't see it working. But now, there, our school board is already getting about 70% of our revenue.
They get 60% of the county's undesignated revenue. They represent 70% of the total budget when you combine all of the school funding and all of their state and federal dollars.
But now, if we're talking about a 50/50 split.
No, no, that is really just.
Because I would be in favor of that. I don't think they would.
That was for illustrative purposes only.
I, I thought I had heard that, so.
That's right. Ease of math.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's going to be the answer they think it's going to be. And we would lose all our flexibility. And I think citizens expect us to be flexible, to help out when we can, to hold back when we should. So I, I, I don't, I don't see it being a benefit.
Anyone else? Well, my personal opinion is that what I've always wanted to see, and Craig and Angie, and you guys are aware of all this, I've always wanted to see a much more closer working relationship before the budget. I, I think that, you know, I, I'm hoping we can get back to meeting with the school board on a regular basis. And I'm hoping that with the new superintendent and Angie maybe forming a good working relationship, too. Not that Craig did not have a good working relationship, because he did with every superintendent that he worked with. But sometimes it wasn't maybe the same on the other side. So what I, I'd like to see is a much more closer working relationship between everyone. Because I think what needs to happen is, we need to understand, and they need to understand, we need to understand each other's goals. And when the schools come to us and they're talking about their operational needs, we need to listen. And a lot of their operational needs, of course, are staff. Well, then, they need to listen to what ours are. And I think that if we could have maybe a closer working relationship, because all that happens is the state doesn't tell us anything, the schools have to make their budget in the dark, they bring it to us, we're making our budget in the dark. Then the state says, or if they might not say, well, here's your money, then everybody has to go back and change everything. And I just, it's just not productive. But on the other hand, if you sort of knew what each body needed. And I'm not talking for one year. I'm talking about you sort of plan, you're planning for the future. I know you guys are sick of me saying that, but that really is the way I see that, you know, something needs to happen. But my question to you all, April brought up that she would be willing to bring this up to the schools. Is this something that we want to bring to them, like the pros and cons that we saw tonight? Or how do you all feel about that, or do you want to think about that?
Did they, did they ever do something like this on their, their side?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
But I will, I will share this with them.
Okay, that's good.
I think that's the starting point, you know, whether or not we... I think it's worth listening to them. That's how you build a good working relationship. But, you know, I think there, there's no, to me, there's no compelling reason to do it. But maybe they can share compelling reasons to do it. I don't know.
Well, I think, you know, from just what I've observed over the years, sometimes the schools feel like that when you get new monies, maybe it's not fairly looked at. But that aside, I still go, I still think it goes back to relationships, and building those relationships, and building that trust. And that's a big challenge. But we can do it.
I like the fact that Ms. Hill said that the schools get 60% right now. I know we get the bar graph where it says the school funding keeps going up, right? But it doesn't say, oh, that number's 60.2 this year, and next year it's 59.8. And, you know, I'd be interested in seeing that, just to say, we're kind of doing it anyway. We've always tried to do it anyway. And to see, you know, I don't think that they, I would imagine that they couldn't come up with a compelling reason, compelling reasons to do this because we're sort of already doing it. But.
The 60% allocation is based on the past five years. If you look at them, some years are more and some are less. But over the past five years, that's what the total funding has been. That's not necessarily the split for those years, but that's the split of the total undesignedated dollars.
Yes, I understand that. But like when I was first elected six years ago, well, perhaps before the Blacksburg High School roof collapsed, funding was at a different place for schools. Was that, in fact, like more or less than 60%? Did it actually change, or did something at the state level change that their funding?
Oh, a lot has changed at the state level because the state funding has gone down, and our funding has continued to increase.
Right.
And that, that's what I was going to chime in with. We've, you know, we don't have a funding formula now, I'll, I'll say that. But one of the things each year is I've built the budget, and I know as Angie moves into the seat and builds a budget each year, we try to, once we go through, what are the revenues? What are the expenditures that are coming in? We try to balance that right off the bat so that, so that all of a sudden, you know, if it's an average of 60, all of a sudden, we're not recommending 50, we're not recommending 70. We try to keep it right around that same amount each year. Then politically, that's where you guys come in and you discuss with the school board, you know, the needs and, and the wants, but, I, I'll just say this, I, I, some of the communities have revenue sharing agreements. We didn't get into a lot of detail with them at this point about, do you like it, do you not like it, whatever. But my big concern, and I've shared this with the former superintendent, and I know I've mentioned it, I think, once to the current one, is if you, if you establish a revenue sharing agreement, as, as Angie said earlier, it works when it works, but then the year that it doesn't work, politically, you're all right back at the table having an argument about funding again. And so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should argue every year instead.
It might be beneficial for the schools to, um, to see the pros and cons because I think maybe they're thinking, or I don't know what they're thinking, but maybe there's some thinking that, well, hey, if we did have an agreement, maybe we would be able to get more money. I don't know if that's what the thinking is, but, but, you know, I think, I'll go back to my point of relationships. That's all I'm going to say. So what do you want to do with it? Do you want Angie to send that over to that, their staff? Or what would you all like to do?
I, I think we share it as an gesture of good faith and then take cues when we build the next agenda for a joint meeting. That would be my suggestion. It's public information, it's in the public domain, so we share it and then see.
Yeah, because we've already sat here tonight in public and talked about it and had the presentation, so.
I still would like to see that chart of the state funding decreasing, our funding increasing, the percentages for like twenty years, just to like.
Just get that for you tomorrow.
Oh, I know.
I know.
But I mean, at, at least the, I know the, some of the public already knows that, but just keep reinforcing that, that if we don't raise taxes, and I'm not necessarily saying we should raise taxes, I'm just saying, you know, our schools are suffering because of everything, a lot of what we don't have control, we don't get to control, so.
Right. Uh, we, we will get that for you. Not tomorrow, but we will.
I think it's called the state not being an equal partner, but I'll just leave it at that. Okay, um, does anyone else want to say anything on this topic? Mr. Fitchakowski, do you want to say an ending comment? I know you're dying to say something down there. Okay, all right. Did we give staff enough direction or not? Okay, we did. All right. All right, anything else on any of the topics here? All right? If not, could we have a motion to come out of work session?
Motion, second.
Second, and, uh, roll call?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye, and we'll, we'll take a ten-minute break. Okay. Alrighty, I think we're all back now, so we'll proceed to our next item of business, which is items of consent. And those are before you. Um, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Uh, any discussion on any of the items? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, that leads us to new business. So our first item we have is to amend the profit conditions and concept plan for the preserves at Walnut Springs Shaw Development, which we heard earlier. Is there a motion to do so?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, you may call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Our next item of new business is additional appropriation for the finance department. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And a second, okay. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, you may call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Our next item concerns the officer of election compensation, um, conversation we had earlier. So I need a motion with the mounts.
Motion, second.
Okay, and that was the two fifty, the three thirty, and the three fifty-five? Did I get that right? Okay, all right, and there's a second, any discussion? Okay, and I guess you'll be telling, um, the registrar, okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
Now, that, that takes effect now, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We all decided.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you want to make it specific for this election?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, that would include the ones that's already started working too, right?
Yeah, it'd be through the general election this November.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Shepard?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone? Aye, and I'd also ask the staff to put on the agenda for next year. Fiscal year start, that we put on our agenda whatever the staff is getting, these guys can too, and we would just approve it. If a separate.
Part of the budget process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I was going to say, I won't be here, but you could do it as part of the budget process.
Well, you can agree to it, just get them more work.
That's right. Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, that leads us to our reports, and we're looking forward to the county attorney's report.
Well, you're in luck. I'm not going to disappoint you then. Um, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Craig. Yeah, you, you're the fourth administrator that I've, um, worked with. Uh, one, the first one wasn't too long, but the other two were longer and y, you were by far the best. And, um, and I have high hopes for Angie to hopefully beat you out. But, um.
Good with that.
All kidding aside, no, I, you, you always, you always did the right things and anytime I told you there's something you couldn't, you shouldn't do, you didn't do it. There wasn't too many of those. And the, um, in, in, you know, you just treat people with kindness and I think you only yelled at me once in the thirteen years we worked together. Uh, that was a pretty stressful time, but, uh, um, but I want to thank you and I really appreciate, I learned a lot from you and, and just how you handle it. And that, you know, you're, you're the best when it comes to, um, dealing with different agencies and, and, um, different, um, you know, points of power within the county. You, you just balance that better than anyone. And, and that's really your success. And and I, you know, I, I learned a lot just watching you and listening to you, and I, I really thank you, so.
Thank you very much, Marty. Thank you.
Good luck, and I'm getting a little jealous, yeah.
Okay, and, um, this is your last county administrator report in public, so what would you like to say?
Uh, I've thought about that a lot. Um, it's been an honor and a pleasure. Um, as I said earlier, when I came in two thousand nine, I had no idea that fourteen years later I'd still be sitting here. That's a testimony to the elected officials I've had the honor of working with. Mary's the only one who's, who's still here, but as those, um, of you that came on over the years and some that left, I had an opportunity to, I talked to John Muffo at Jim Politis's funeral on Saturday. There've been a lot of very good people on this board, and that's one of the reasons I'm still here. The other reason that I'm still here is, um, I have been so blessed with the staff that we have here. That starts with Angie, Vicky, you know, Judy Kaiser and Carol that were here. I couldn't ask for a better group to work with, and, and they've all, uh, helped me grow to be a better leader. You know, Marty and I, Marty is, is kidding, but I've, I've learned a lot from Marty, too. We, we have our fun, but, uh, when it's time to get down to business, we all pull together. Uh, I'm, you know, I don't know what else to say. I just am so honored, so blessed. Looking forward to playing with grandkids, um, looking forward to continuing to serve the county in various ways. Thank you for the two opportunities, uh, tonight. Um, we're not going anywhere. Montgomery County's home. We are going to spend a lot of time at the beach, I'll tell you. We are going to spend a lot of time at the beach, I'll tell you that right now. Looking forward to going to the beach more often, but just from the bottom of my heart, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Can I just add, you did have somewhat of a baby face 14 years ago. You know how they show the presidents when they come in four years later, how they've aged?
Well, I was looking at that, too, and you know, I'm genetically blessed with dark hair, but my hair has really thinned and changed a whole lot over the years. It's just, I think one reason I let this grow was because this started leaving really quick in places. But, yeah, it's, it's been a lot of fun, and I do, I know we have an event next Monday, I look forward to celebrating and hugging with you. I shared with several of you, I think, from what I've been told, everybody in the family's showing up, so that'll be, that'll be a scene. But it's, thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, right before Halloween, it will be.
Now, was you poking, saying you're blessed with hair? What were you saying over?
Last week when I, or a week or so ago, when I went and got a haircut, I said, well, some of these you take back here, can you start sticking it in a few other places because it's going fast?
Earl, I believe he's getting on me and you.
Yeah, I know. It's all, it's all genetics, I said.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and that leads us to board member reports, and we'll start with Supervisor Fitchukowski.
Excellent. Marty, don't get any ideas, we added 10 years to your sentence.
Be talking to my wife, huh?
Nah, well, hey, she's got to say too. Yeah, I would just say, add to, little spin off what Marty said, you're the only county administrator I've ever worked with, so I'm sorry, Angie, you got, you got some big shoes to fill, and I know ladies don't like to wear big shoes, so, good luck with that, but it's really been a pleasure, and I see that, we already got you on an authority, so.
Yeah.
Ka-ching!
I'm looking forward to serving, thank you.
I've only got one announcement after that, and it's a big one, and you guys probably already know it, so it's probably, probably wasting my time, but the New River Valley Regional Commission led a consortium of companies that applied for a tech hub grant, and we found out today, we got it. Half a mil.
Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty good. And again, we can, I think, I think there's actually more applications for it, but it's, it's from the United States Economic Development Authority, so it's a pretty big win. And it's, they've already changed the name of the consortium to Virginia's Additive Manufacturing and Applied Materials Strategy Development Consortium. Put that on a baseball cap.
Does it have an acronym?
Yeah, what is the acronym?
I haven't even tried to do that, but that's all I got, but that's pretty big news.
That's exciting, thank you, Steve. Supervisor King?
Yeah, I just got two things. You know, winter time's coming, so please have your flu's chimney cleaned and inspected. And last meeting, we was talking about the MOA, so I just want to give everybody a little bit of information. You know, it was said that a million dollars is what the agency gets for operations, and that's for maintenance on vehicles, heating and air and all, everything for the buildings. And the county does step up if something serious happens, they will step up. I'm not saying they don't. Base pay on EMS that we bring in is around $62,279. Forty-two of it is pay, $20,000, $20,277 is benefits. And I'm just going by what we were sent out volunteer-wise. Active volunteers in Montgomery County is 337, that's not including life members, which some of them do still run calls and still are active in the fire and rescue service. If you added that up, 337, just 337 of the actives, and paid them base pay, which they would need more than base pay because some of us are actual able to train other people with certifications. What volunteer saves county taxpayers is a year. It's $20,988,000, almost $21 million a year. And I had that checked by two other people to make sure I had my calculations right. That's just some information when we start talking about this MOA again. People was asking me, well, you know, they said it costs a million dollars here for that, but nobody ever said what we save the taxpayers a year. So I just wanted to inform everybody what the volunteers do actually save taxpayers every year.
So the volunteers don't work full-time as, as, you know, they, they're on call, right?
Right.
So how many hours did you give each volunteer? Because they're not eight-hour, five days a week, eight-hour people at this time.
We can't actually give them hours, and I'm not being mean to anybody when I say this. We was at a VACO meeting one night, or one weekend, and we took a break from class, we went out in the hallway to get coffee and cookies, whatever, and heard two other supervisors not going to say what county they was from, but it wasn't close. And I heard one of them asked the other one, say, "Well, are you still volunteering?" "No, I get paid now. We get this, and we got to do this, and we got to do that," talking about everything that they got to do. So I sat there and listened for a minute, and I said, "Excuse me, man." I said, "So you don't volunteer no more?" "No, I get paid for what I do." I said, "Well, let me ask you something." And I showed him my pager. I said, "Well, if you're laying in bed one night, and that pager goes off, are you going to get them running that call?" "No, sir, I don't get paid for that." I said, "Volunteers do." So actually, you cannot say how many hours do they put in. Just like I said a couple meetings ago, we had two structures in our district. Christiansburg Fire Department and paid EMS for the county to come out and us. We started a little bit after 4:00 a.m., we got done something after 7:00, and then once you get done with that, you still have to go back to the fire department and get your hose back up, you got to get your trucks fueled up, and some of them called into work the next day because they had to get the trucks ready for the next call.
So in other words, it would be hard to figure that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. King, all right. Supervisor Demonts?
Well, I'll start by saying thank you to Craig. I don't know how you kept it together during the video, as soon as Angie started talking, I welled up immediately. You're also the only county administrator that I've ever had the privilege of working with, and I look forward to working with Ms. Hill when she fully takes over, but I can say my involvement on a state level with Virginia Association of Counties, I've had the opportunity to talk to a whole lot of other supervisors. I've heard a lot of feedback on how great our county administrator is, and my response has always been, "Don't you get any ideas." We have been just extraordinarily blessed to have you. I don't think, until you announced your retirement, I had never contemplated what it would be like if you weren't the county administrator for Montgomery County. You've left us in a wonderful position with wonderful staff, and I know that that was very intentional and from your heart because of how much you care for this community, so thank you very much for your service and for your volunteering on boards and committees with an S in the future. Look forward to seeing you around. I'd just like to say to Supervisor King, thank you for that, bringing that information, that figure is very impactful, so I appreciated you bringing that. I did have two items that I wanted to bring up in addition to those things. One, I wanted to see if we could have maybe during this time or in a future meeting, if now is not appropriate, but in light of the information that we received from the Parks and Rec Commission, which, to remind you all, I am our liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission, but if that has changed any opinions or minds about moving forward with a large field, I think that was something that I was advocating during our several discussions about building a larger field, is that we're not meeting the needs of our programs currently, and the demand isn't there for a larger field, but does anybody have any motivation to have a longer discussion, maybe at a future meeting in a work session, or just any, any other direction about that?
I have one point to add. I got an update today from Scott Woodrum with regard to the status of the field, and the plans are, have been designed, and then they were sent to get reviewed as part of the VDOT recreational access fees that we got grant funding for, and they were returned to the A and E firm for further review, so the bid has not been released yet, and the A and E firm is going to redo those, make the changes that have been asked for, and then that goes back to the reviewer with the revenue access fund, recreational access funds, so it will be a little while before the bid goes out, even as it is with, with a large field or not, it will be a little while before it goes out.
So we have some time?
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing, okay.
Right now, we're, we think that it will be, the bid package will be issued in December.
Okay.
So are you thinking?
December or January, we'll have to make sure the timing is right so that we get good bids, and you know, if it's over the holiday, we might need to wait until January.
Yeah, because we have three more meetings, so.
Well, and I, at our, at our September 25th, 6th, 7th, something like that meeting, I was hoping that we would be able to hear some feedback from the Parks and Rec Commission, the meeting schedule just didn't allow it until tonight's meeting, but I would like the opportunity to examine that in a little bit more detail and examine kind of what some of the, the other impacts are, not only is there delay to construction, but we graded that entire property for a plan that we're now discussing potentially changing. There's significant cost associated with making the changes, it's not just about a little bit, a more substantive discussion, if that would be possible. Not, we don't retreat, no, not a retreat, maybe, maybe just an item on the agenda in a work session.
Okay, so we've got that noted, yes.
Didn't we pass, we didn't pass anything last time?
There wasn't a vote, it was a consensus.
It was consensus to, to instruct the A and E firm to look at the larger field, but as Angie commented, it's not.
I think we should go into this with our eyes wide open and understand the pros and cons of, of both options, so.
Okay.
All right, so we'll put that on a meeting.
So I would, I would appreciate that, thank you. And then the other item is something I meant to bring up in our last meeting, but it was after midnight, so I figured I'd save it for tonight. In our joint meeting with the school board recently, we discovered something that has been bothering me ever since, and that is the state of the Eastmont High School track. Is that something that maybe this board would be interested in talking about as something? It just has bothered me ever since that we don't have a track team at Eastmont High School because we don't have a facility and condition enough for them to be able to use it, and I'm looking at you Supervisor Fitchukowski, because you're much more in tune with the needs of your community. It may not be something that we're, we are hearing about, but I would, I would like to address it if it's needed.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see, but I think, didn't they give us a cost on what that would, I thought they did on one of their charts, what it would cost to repair?
They have provided updates, I think, on one of those facility updates, I think they did indicate how much that would cost, but we could certainly ask them for more information about that and explore funding alternatives.
Yeah, I think it was right pricey because of the...
It was, yeah.
Because they would have to take it all up the way it was designed and not just resurface it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd be willing to talk about it, but...
And I think part of my concern just lies in equity. You know, I know that we've had fundraisers or booster clubs for other high schools and with larger student bodies, and so we've been able to generate funds to upgrade facilities, just, you know, volume of students, increase the volume of potential donors, and so I just think it's really unfortunate, and would love to discuss if there's something we could do.
Okay, so do you want us to add that to the agenda when we meet with the school board for the liaison meeting on November 6th and ask them about that, and then?
Maybe they can come to our first meeting in November?
And see, we'll be having a meeting with them on November 29th.
Yeah, would, would everybody be okay with, with that plan, seeing if it's an item of mutual concern that we could discuss at our next joint meeting?
Sure.
I would appreciate it, thank you. That's all I have. Again, thank you, Craig. We're going to miss you.
Thank you, April. And Madam Chair, can I jump in for a minute?
Sure.
Because I realized that, didn't recognize Angie a few minutes ago, to recognize our newest deputy county administrator. I meant to do that in my remarks, but I'm, I'm a basket case tonight, so.
But he's smiling, he's okay. Chris Lawrence.
Yes, I would like to recognize Chris Lawrence. He started last Monday, so he's been back, he came all week and came back today, so we are really excited that he's here, he's a great addition to our team.
And he better keep coming back, okay. All right, Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to say some kind words to Craig also. I've worked for many different businesses, and you have been either the best or one of the few best business leaders that I have ever worked for, with, or for, and that me, to me, I interpret that as being very well-rounded, you know, not only in your leadership qualities, but also your fairness to your staff, and then in your instance, looking out for the whole county, and not just the county, but the whole region and state and the different associations and, and stuff like that, and then having a family and taking care of them and, you know, and all that, that takes, and as Supervisor King often will say, you know, it's not, it's not just the, the fire and rescue people, it's the spouse that's holding down the fort in the, in the back, you know, when they're busy because you never turn your phone or laptops off, even though we tell you to, kind of thing, so thank you to your family, too, and I know we all wish you all the best, and we look forward to hanging out with you in the future.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Okay, Supervisor Shepherd?
Yeah, that's the only thing I have to say, is Craig, I know we've all said it, but I can't say it enough, I really appreciate getting to work with you and, and your expertise and, and, you know, just your integrity is a good word. And everybody that I've talked to, of all the complaints and stuff I get about petty things mostly, I've never heard a bad word or nobody complain about the administrator ever since I've been on the board, and I think it says a lot, especially some of the people I've talked to that, you know, some of the things they have to say, so anyway. But anyway, I congratulate you and hope to see you around, and thank you very much.
I won't be a stranger, thank you.
Okay, so I guess it's my turn, I have a few things. Tomorrow, as you all know, you've been invited to the Christiansburg High School groundbreaking at 5:00 in front of Christiansburg High School, if you're able to make that, that would be great. Our next meeting, remember, is going to be Wednesday, November 15th because of the VACO conference, and then we'll have a meeting on Monday, November 27th, and then we'll have our special meeting with the school board on Wednesday, November 29th, and then another regular meeting on Monday, December 11th. Now, I wanted to make a comment... Now, I wanted to make a comment, I was especially moved tonight when I saw the picture of Craig with Jim Polittis. I thought that was, that, that's, that was really, you two really had a special bond, especially when you moved out to Reiner.
One of, can I, one of my, one of my experiences with Jim, God bless him, was, he called me one day when he had a vehicle issue, and when I got out there, I had on a suit, was all dressed up, and he had something on the back of the truck that was, not to be graphic, but was oozing, and he had been to the abattoir, and for some reason, he kept buffalo heads, and they were on the back of his truck, and his truck had broken down, and thank God I didn't have to move the buffalo heads, but I did, I did go get him two quarts of oil so he could get his truck going. But, yeah, that was, that was one of my early, I thought, you know, I've, I've done a lot for mayors and elected officials, but I've never gone to a truck that had buffalo heads on the back of it. Yeah, give me a call, get your quarter.
He didn't know that was part of the job description, but...
Jim was a character. I miss him dearly, he...
I would like to thank Josh for putting that video together.
Yeah, it was really good.
But Josh did such a great job. I previewed it before tonight, and then I said to him, did you mean to make me cry? And he said, yes. So he did a great job, the way he was so intentional with the pictures and the timing of how they were with our comments. It was great. Thank you, Josh.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh, absolutely.
And then on another thank you, thank the staff tonight for the Operation Greenlight. It was very successful, and of course, we thank our veterans again for their service. And then I, you know, let's all keep sharing our thoughts, and it was just a weird coincidence that all this happened, so I ended up sitting next to Craig tonight on his last, you know, meeting when I was on the only, only one left that was on the original board that hired him, and again, we need to thank those original board members because we all agreed that he was the one, and, and, boy, you came in here, and what I liked about your leadership style is that you developed everyone so that they could become leaders in whatever they were doing. And you were able to delegate, but yet know what was going on, and that's a really fine skill, and we're going to really miss you.
Thank you, Mary.
And I know that I've called Craig on many occasions just for some guidance and some advice, and he has been super.
Well, you have both my phone numbers, so you're...
Yeah, yes, that's the thing, we know his home phone number, too. So when he has to give up that county phone, uh-oh. Okay, any other business or comments?
Yeah, I got some more. The new county administrator just got a new job, roadside service.
My best.
Yes.
That's right.
And if she's having a real busy day, just give me a call. Me and one of the grandkids will come out and take care of it.
Yeah.
If I could just say one more thing, because it's, it's another unusual thing that happened tonight. There was somebody here that spoke that has won more awards, I thought, than anybody I could ever imagine, except for one other person, and that's Craig Meadows. Kevin Byrd has got more awards than I've ever seen, but you, I think, have beat him hands down.
I don't know about that. I, I do want to mention one more thing, because when you mentioned the video, Angie, I was holding my own until I saw pictures of Rhonda, and everything I've done in my career, I've done for my family first and foremost, and she, she has been a godsend to me, she is such a blessing, and I talk a lot about the grand, grand boys because we have a lot of fun, but I'm really looking forward to spending time with my wife, and I'm praying that she doesn't come up with too long a to-do list, but I think she's already working on it, but I'm, I'm very blessed. I'm, I'm very blessed. Thank you all so much.
Thank, thank you for all you've done for us, for the citizens, for the county, really appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Well, you know, Craig's probably thinking now, election's coming up, boy, I'm glad I ain't got to deal with that again.
Yeah, well, when you were naming off all the meetings, it's like, hm, nope, I'm good.
Oh. Thought you might come back, and don't forget, Animal Care and Adoption Center needs volunteers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. All right, if there's no other business, we are officially adjourned. Thank you all for staying and coming.
Thank you.